I will officially call to order the study session. The Board of Directors. It's not a meeting, huh? We're having a closed session?
That's okay. We're not being announced.
Yeah, all right. Fair enough. Just information, yeah. And so today is May 24th, 2021. And would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Better do the script, huh? So I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under Governor's executive orders in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. The agenda states that the public may view this meeting online as there will be no public location for attending in person. This meeting is being livestreamed online at the district's website. And as stated on the agenda, members of the public who wish to comment on any item on the agenda were given the opportunity to submit comments by emailing the district. Such comments will become part of the board meeting record. Do we have any general comments?
We did not receive any general comments for today's meeting.
Okay. And we'll be doing, we're not going to be taking any actions, we don't have to worry about that. But I'll make sure if we have any remote attendees to be calling on them regularly to keep them engaged and make sure that their communications are still good. Roll call, please.
Good morning, and I want to do a quick check because I received a message from Director Estrada that he could not hear anything, so we may have to go for it. Okay. Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Director Estrada.
Here.
There he is. Okay, perfect. Director Bianco will be absent today, and Director Aguilar.
Here.
Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Do we have any other public comment at this time? So hearing now, we're going to recess into closed session to discuss items 1 through 4, and we will reconvene here. I don't think we're going to have any reportable action from closed session, but if we do, we'll report out on that, and then we will open the meeting again for our study session.
And if I may, Director Estrada, I just sent you the calendar appointment with the closed session information to your email, so you'll have the call-in information for that.
Are we on? Yes, we are. A regular meeting is hereby reconvened. We do not have any reportable action from closed session, and we, this moves us into the one item of study today, which is the fiscal year 2022 operating and capital budget. Jeff, feel the floor is yours.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. We have a overall budget study session for you. I know you've had a chance to read through it, so I'm going to try and hit the high points. Feel free to slow me down or speed me up as this is appropriate. So here's the process we've been going through now. I just want to emphasize that where we're at with the budget, there is a very good harmony between the work we've been doing with the cost of service study, the numbers that you've been seeing over many study sessions with those various aspects for canal, the replenishment funds, and domestic. All of those are incorporated in the budget that you see today. We continue to work with our ratings agency, standard reporters, to tell the story of what's happening with this budget because from a kind of a high-level point of view, if you're just looking at this, there could be some level of alarm because we've had several years of spending down reserves, and that's been a very planned intentional effort on behalf of the board. And so we are telling that story, explaining what we're doing, why we're doing it, as part of our work with outside agencies. I think we have a very strong budget and a very good story to tell. So looking at the overall proposed budget, you see some, you know, rather large increases here, and when you start to unpack it a bit, nothing too alarming. I'd like to just focus here on, you know, the capital budget is up $68 million. You'll recall the $50 million increase associated with the Oasis project. And I also like to point out from the study session that Kerry Oliphant led on April 21st, this is very much in harmony with that. There's only been one addition since then, and that's an increasing of the item for, well, 6808 generator of $560,000. And $300,000 of that is being paid for by a grant, and the remaining $260,000 by Pago. So other than that, the CIP is unchanged, and I apologize to the board, I didn't think to include the CIP in the packet. We've got it loaded if we need to refer to it at any point, and I'll make sure next year's process we won't. We'll include that again. So the, just a little bit more on the Oasis. So the loan proceeds will be, for '22 is $34 million. And you say, well, where's the other part of the $50 million? It's coming in this year. So we'll have $8.9 million recorded as loan proceeds revenue, if you will, to offset the expenses that were approved by the board back on April 21st. It's mostly those land purchases.
And where does this number fit, Jeff?
So if you, I'm saying, if you look at the capital improvement line item, and if you look at budget of $97 million, and then it's up to projected of $103, that line item, just going from the $97 to $103, includes the $8.9 million increase that was approved by the board last month to deal with the, some of the first phase of the Oasis project with the land purchases. And then the remainder of the Oasis expense is appearing in the budget for fiscal year So when you see that big increase of the capital improvement budget, you know, the largest item by far is the Oasis project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. On debt service, because that's always something we want to keep an eye on there. So when you look at the changes, so projected amount of 11 to the budget amount, as you recall, we were doing that $9 million of payment for the Thomas C. Levy payment in the East in this year. And so what it's dropped down to is a much smaller amount. We have internal debt service of $1.2 million for the West project, and $2.1 million of principal interest for the East, and then domestic, domestic loan payment of $1 million, Santation $1.3, and then about $800,000 for Stormwater. So the major assumptions, this is, should be quite familiar to the board, the cost of service study assumptions for this year. Canal, we have just the, the starting of the catch-up on gate charges in Kwaga. This is being brought to full cost over the next three years, and so the first year of that phase in is incorporating canal, and yet no increase the regular canal rates for this year. The domestic overall revenue increase is 5%, adjusting both fixed and consumptive charges. And then the West replenishment is a 15% increase, and East is 9.5%. And of course, State Water Project, board approved the one penny increase to that tax, which is generating approximately $7 million. The operating budget, the main changes, biggest item is anticipating a $12.8 million increase in the water purchases. And you see in the notes there, that's divided into the Transfer B part for Canal and 7,000 acre feet for West replenishment. And the Metropolitan Agreement by contract was going up by 15,000 feet per conservation agreement with them. The next biggest item, I believe, in the budget is the increase in utilities, and we frankly missed the mark this year on projecting utilities increases. So when you see this increase for IID being $1.1 million and SEC at $1.6 million, it's a combination of the shortfall for this year and next year. The QSA mitigation payment is contractual item of $1.9 million, and that's, I believe that's the last big increase that we have for that. And no change in FTE for personnel, holding fast at 569. And we do have, actually, I should switch over to this page here real quick so you can start to see. Yeah, at least, it doesn't really help you to be on here yet. But so with the salaries, we have included increases of 4.24% for capitals, for labor, but the capitalization of a portion of that is reflecting about a 2% increase district-wide. So the net increase is just showing about 2%. If you're wondering, hey, that seems kind of light, that's why there's the breakdown there for that. So the, I think that's enough on that slide. The revenue assumptions, we've already talked about those rate increases for cost of service and State Water Project. The property tax increase is estimated to be 3.8%. We work with a consultant, HDL, that helps look at what's happening valleywide with growth situations and also the normal AV growth. So the 3% is, is a mix of that. Intergovernmental revenue is budget $1.7 million for the IID proceeds and $1.3 million for the underrun. And I just want to mention that if you were to be looking at this document that has more details, you'll see the, it's a $3 million increase. It's basically, we, in the past, we haven't tried to budget this because this number tends to be all over the place, and especially with the cost of service study going on, we're like, we can't do that this year. You know, it's like, oh, you know, an extra million or two or three shows up. So we, we're trying to hit the mark now closer to what is expected to relieve rate pressure, basically.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Quick question on the property taxes, and I might have missed it. That 3.8 growth, what, what is that number, a dollar amount?
Oh, okay. Hold on just a second. It is, I know I've got it here. The general property taxes is going up from a projected 38, just under $39 million to $42 million. And the, the split between the part that's growth and the AV growth, I don't have that number.
Okay, but, but, but all of that, but not all of that is discretionary, right?
Oh, right, right.
That, that's, that's the property taxes that goes into the different pots.
Okay. So, so I realized that, you know, we had the discussion about, talking about property taxes, and we just realized this morning we didn't put anything in the presentation on this, the new allocation. So I printed one in case the question came up. I apologize to you, since you're online, you're not going to be able to see this, but I can read the numbers, and I'm going to pass out to the board members in the room, so they'll have this sheet.
Can you have someone email it to you?
Yes.
Someone can scan it.
So in that discussion, Jeff, if, if, if last year, if this last year we were at $39 million and the property tax assessment was 10, 10 cents per 100, 10 cents per 100. So if I do the math, I'm trying to get the valuation of the total, our total service area. How would I do that? $39 million divided by .1 divided by 100 or times 100?
The .1 is a different number. The State Water Project tax is about $65 million.
Yes, State Water Project.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're working on the different. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We're working on, I'm sorry. I was thinking we're on this State Water Project.
Right, right. He said it went up about $3 million, but that, that would be a lot more than 3.8% because that would be more like 7%.
Director Estrada, I, we will get that, this sheet emailed to you, but I'll just read the percentage numbers for you. So for the current year, it's 11.4% for domestic, 51% for canal, 2.11%.
11.2.
I'm sorry. That's a mask. Sorry. 11.2% for West replenishment and 26.4%. And per the discussion we had, instead of focusing on the percentages of saying, let's increase a certain percentage, you can increase a dollar amount equivalent to what is requisite. And so the, so the new, the new percent, excuse, I was going to read you the new percentages.
Okay, go ahead.
The new percentages for domestic is 11.1%. Canal goes down to 46.1%, and West is at 9.9%. And East is up to 32.9%.
Now, the breakdown, the, the dollar amount that's being broken down by these percentages.
It, it is.
It's not the 40, it's not the 42 million, right? It's, it's more like, what, 16 million maybe?
It is. I apologize that number I was reading is a combination.
Because when we look at the 39, 42 million, that includes, does that include the property tax that we generate for, like, let's say, Stormwater?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir.
So I, I think what I was really trying to get to was, you know, what's the number that we have some discretion as a board to, to, to put into the different funds because we want to try to help those rates?
So I have, I have, I just was handed the new, the dollar amounts associated with these percentages. So for domestic, it's $2,276,000. For canal is $9.5 million. For West is $2,420,000. And for East, it's $6,778,528. Total discretionary rate is $20,597,000.
Is that for fiscal '22?
This is for fiscal '22. So again, we'll, we'll email this out to the full board. I apologize that I didn't think to include this in the packet.
Jeff, and that doesn't include the intergovernmental revenue? That doesn't include the 1.7 and the 1.3?
No, this is just the discretionary property taxes.
Where, where are we putting that 1.7 and that 1.3?
It's an intergovernmental line. If you were to look at the, let's see, if you look at the all-fund summary document that I, we sent to you, up in the top section under revenues, the kind of the third from the last line is intergovernmental revenue. And that's, that's where I said, you know, there's a $3 million increase because we didn't, there was no attempt to budget the IID proceeds. Are you, are you seeing that line there?
Yeah, I see it. I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out, it sounds like we're getting, or we're accounting for the 1.7 in the, in the proceeds, and, and we're, we're accounting for the water that we're selling to Met. And it sounds like you're saying that equals about $3 million, and I'm just trying to figure out where do we put that money?
Canal. Goes to canal.
Yes, it goes to canal.
Is it really revenue?
So that, so that takes canal to an infusion of about $12.5 million.
It just reduces our expense.
Yeah, it's, if you look at the second page of that budget summary under the canal, you'll see the budget change of $2,625,000 under intergovernmental. So it went from $375 to $3 million.
Yeah, you know, this is, this is, I think, as a board, the, the number, now the number is about, maybe close to, what is it, maybe about $23, $24 million. And I think that, you know, it's, it's an area, at least for myself, that I, that I'd like to, in the future, maybe, get more involved as a, as a conversation of where we put this money. I know historically, I think we've been kind of, for some reason, kind of, I, I don't think the percentages have changed that much in the way that they're being allocated to the funds. I think at one point it was even simpler, maybe it was 50/50, 50 to domestic, 50 to canal. And, and I think in general, my understanding is that, is that we try to do it to where it makes more sense, and maybe the, the understanding has been that when you put it in canal, it trickles down to a lot of the other rates. And so, and I know that it's complicated, there's a lot of moving parts, and so sometimes I just like to get a little bit more comfortable in, in seeing that it does trickle down.
I understand.
And that's when you put it, yeah, so, but again, you know, I, it's something that I'm very interested in. It's, you know, we're talking about a lot of money, we're talking about $25 million, and so I think that, you know, I, I'd just like to have a bigger conversation in the future about it. It doesn't need to be today, but just something, you know, putting, putting it out there. And then the other thing, just one last comment, regarding the underrun, you know, we're, we're selling that water to Met, and I imagine that, that, I guess I'm trying to understand how that ties back to like the QSA payment? And if, and if that water is going to Met and is generating revenue and is going back into a fund, whether that fund makes a payment to the QSA mitigation?
So it's really just the cost of water, not the cost of QSA mitigation? And because the QSA is take or pay, our longstanding agreement with Metropolitan is they wanted us to make sure that IID stayed on deliveries. They didn't want us adjusting the delivery schedule because we weren't, we didn't have a need for the water, so they have agreed to purchase the underrun from us. I'm, I'm not quite sure why there would be any additional revenue from what it costs for the QSA water itself, but I see Robert getting ready to come explain perhaps that to us. I mean, it should just be a push if they're covering the cost of what we would otherwise pay.
Good morning. This is Robert. The General Manager explained exactly right. I think, you know, it was arrangement between Metropolitan and CVWD to make sure that the QSA delivery schedule for IID was kept on track. So as a result, it's basically cost neutral, I think, to CVWD. We, you know, pay for the water ahead of time, and for any underrun that doesn't get used, Metropolitan does pay us or reimburse us in the subsequent year once the decree accounting figures are trued up. So there, there is no additional QSA component.
So is, is that really a revenue item, or is that would be an offset to an expense?
It's, it's showing as a revenue in here, but you're right, on the bills, it comes as a credit to our expense.
Right. We usually square all that up for the $35,000 to $15,000, as well as the, the underrun credit all in one bill typically happens by the end of June to settle up the fiscal year.
Right, yeah, I understand.
And, and President Powell, I guess, I guess that makes more sense to me now, but the real question is whether that transaction happens through canal, and so it's just an expense in canal and then accrediting canal?
That's the way I understand it.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Which as Oasis gears up, that, that should go away.
Correct.
Thank you, Robert.
It should be reduced, anyway.
Yeah.
And then once we get the second phase of the Palm Desert replenishment facility, hopefully that will go away.
So it's a, it's anticipated to be a short-term position.
Hopefully within the next two years, we'll have greater clarity on both those projects.
Yeah, very good.
Not completion.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions on the overall revenue slide? I'll go on to expense. I'll go on to expense, uh, assumptions. Again, as I said before, we have no increase into the FD. The, um, increase in salaries is shown there, which is really the, the net of, uh, all of those items and the, uh, capitalization. The supplies and services number increased four hundred and eighty-nine. And I do want to say the part that you don't, aren't seeing a lot of things between the lines here, if you recall, for the current year's budget that we're going through, the board had us do a five percent across the board in decrease in all of these budgets. And generally, those have held the line, but there have been certain areas where we needed to, to have some increases. The replenishment charges there, it's hard to see on that screen, um, increased by four hundred, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand for, uh, based upon the, uh, the new rates for the West and the East racks. And, um, the water purchases, actually the water costs are really the biggest increase, going up by, uh, eleven point eight million, I'm sorry, twelve point eight million. And all of those items are broken down, four point seven million associated with the fifteen thousand acre feet for West replenishment. The East branch, uh, is three point eight million, uh, Canal water, one point two million, Oroville Dam, a million, IID, QSA water, seven hundred and ten thousand, Sites, five hundred thousand, and GLC Rosedale is six hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, already discussed the utilities item there. Uh, the QSA mitigation payments, uh, is another item worthy of mentioning. And that is the item we've talked about that goes away after fiscal year twenty-six. And that appears on this slide here. Okay, I think I covered all that. Any questions on these slides?
Yeah, uh, under the contra-pass-through, um, expenses, what, what's CCLP? I just, I'm drawing a blank here.
That's the Coachella Canal lining project.
Oh, okay, got it.
Sorry about that.
I, I just had a comment, Jeff, um, and, and for the board. I did, um, submit several questions last week to your staff on, on the proposed budget presentation. And one of the questions I had asked was, knowing that, um, a reduction in operating expenses was a, a goal of the board, uh, I want to get sort of a sense from Jim as to where Steph, um, was at in terms of developing recommendations for reducing operating expenses. And I was very pleased to get back from Jim a list of initiatives that Steph is already working on that I think will probably be expanded, uh, going forward. But I'm thinking, Jim, that perhaps, I'm not sure if you had shared this memo with the rest of the board, but I think, uh, it might be useful to perhaps do that going forward and, I think, give us a sense that, um, I mean, my take is that most of these significant, uh, budget expense items are items that are out of our control, um, without, without a question. And I think Steph's doing a really good job in terms of trying to get these other expenses under control.
Thank you, sir. I will be happy to pass that out to the rest of the board.
Thank you.
I just would like to mention on this, this pass-through, uh, contra-expense side. So we're doing a little bit of a different accounting treatment. So whenever we have, uh, items like intergovernmental revenues where we're getting basically reimbursed for expense from DWA for, you know, their share of expenses, uh, out in the West, instead of showing as an increase to expense, an increase to revenue, it's really better to show as a reduction or reimbursement or contra-expense. So we're not inflating what the expenditures are looking like, inflating what the revenues are looking like. It's truly not a revenue. We're just getting paid back our share of joint expenses with another.
Is that an accounting choice or is that, are there, are there like?
Well.
Do you follow some rules on that? I mean, or something that the banks would look at?
This does follow the rules better, but the, this kind of thing would be the kind of treatment where auditors wouldn't argue with your, with you.
With the method. So you could go either way?
They would say go either way, but the better way, I think the better way of doing it is like this.
I do, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we never, no one likes to see expenses going up either, so. And just to me, logically, it doesn't make sense, you know, to count the, the full expense and the full revenue where only a portion of it is ours. Okay, so, non-operating, no. So we have, uh, a little bit of debt service still going on for, uh, Thomas C. Levy. There'll be two more years of the two-point-one million dollar payments for that. And per board direction, you know, we're just doing interest-only payments on the Mid Valley Pipeline, so that's one point two million. That's where you get your three point three million in, uh, inter-fund revenues and debt service, internal borrowings. The loan proceeds for the Oasis bond is there. Um, Bank of the West draw, just to refresh the board's memory, and I'm sure Director Aguilar hasn't heard a lot of this. So last year's budget, we did a loan with WIFIA for the, the big two projects that are occurring out in the East, the, uh, North Indio Flood Control and the Coachella Stormwater Channel, excuse me. Uh, part of our agreement with the Environmental Protection Agency, we negotiated a delay of drawing on the loan for a couple of years. And we are borrowing ultra-low-cost money from Bank of the West at much more favorable rate than what we'd get at our one point nine percent rate, which, I mean, it's kind of, it's amazing these numbers are so low these days. So we're essentially, uh, we're leveraging our ability to borrow cheaper money for this time, and then we'll start drawing next year on the WIFIA loan. The total loan represents forty-nine percent of the total cost for those two projects.
Thank you.
So we're also using, uh, twenty, uh, one point six million in restricted funds you see there. And that is quite significant. And grants and loans, you know, I just got to give a shout out to a lot of people who are involved with, it's just, it's incredibly significant effort that's going on constantly in this organization to get, uh, grant money and low-cost loans. So right now, you know, we have about twenty active grant and loan applications amounting to about two hundred million dollars. And we're getting, we already know of, uh, this solid five million dollars of grant revenue. And that's associated with the Non-Potable Project, uh, for, uh, which one? The Connection, Non-Potable Connection Project. So there's five million in, uh, grant money and thirty-three million in low-cost loan money for that. But, you know, Cary Alphonse Department, uh, Operations, Environmental, there's, and Finance, you know, there's so many departments that are working on this and working with consultants, constantly trying to find every opportunity for grant money, which is, we know is like free, and, uh, the low-cost loans to increase our, um, opportunity to have more funds available, reduces rate pressure.
Yeah, appreciate that, Jeff. Can we try to move this along a little?
Well, at this point, I'm, I'm almost through, I'm through the overall stuff, so when we're getting down to, um, individual funds, I'll just take questions mainly. So let's go to the reserves. And this is a little bit more for the public than for the board. So, you know, we've adopted changes to reserve policy, um, that was implemented over a couple of steps. And we've, for this coming budget, uh, we're projecting a decrease of ending reserves by about twenty-one million. Uh, this is, uh, the net amount, the, um, overall, there are certain funds that are showing reductions of reserves by thirty-five. And there are a few that are showing increases. And all of this is meant to have.
Did your microphone just go on? It sounds like.
It's on. Can you hear me now? I guess I was too far away. Just trying to relook at what the reserve policy should be. The, the amounts are what we need, not what was historically there. And everywhere we could, we're looking at opportunities to right-size that. And again, the effect is to reduce some rate pressure. Overall, from two thousand and eighteen, following board direction, we've, uh, we're, we've reduced, well, we've reduced reserves by a hundred and forty-two million. And as I said before, this is part of the story that if people are just looking at the numbers, this would be alarming. But this is a planned effort, a plan, this is us managing our business. And we are diligent in explaining that every opportunity we have. And this spend-down is kind of at the leveling off stage. Days cash on hand, uh, has gone from six hundred and sixty-eight days, uh, to, down to, uh, four hundred and four now, and will go down eventually to two hundred and sixty-four, uh, two, uh, to four hundred and four, which is a two hundred and sixty-four day decrease in cash on hand. That's not a great thing, but again, it's part of the story we tell. It's not a sign of fiscal, fiscal instability. It's, uh, really fiscal control that's being exercised. So here's, and here's where the, uh, reserve summaries stand right now for all the funds. Okay, so past that, it's individual funds. I wasn't going to spend much time on these. I'll flip through the slides, and if board members have individual questions or something that's, it's new or extraordinary that I need to point out, well, so on the Canal Fund, here's the major assumptions. And here's the numbers. Domestic water. And this five percent revenue increase is overall, so it depends on, uh, the customer, what they're actually going to experience as a percentage. There's the domestic summary. This is, this is a good opportunity to talk about, and again, part of our story too, the ending reserve in the red by almost four million dollars. This is planned. And we tell the story, the plan is by fiscal year twenty-six, per our new reserve policy of having a five-year opportunity to get in the black. That's where we'll be if we follow the cost service plan. Then we'll be okay in fiscal year twenty-six. So we are not to be alarmed by this. Sanitation Fund, there's the assumptions. We are close to, uh, selecting a firm for the RFP process. Here's the numbers for sanitation. Stormwater, there's the property tax assumption numbers. And there's the summary. West replenishment assumptions with the fifteen percent increase in the rate. The significant driver being increased water expense. There's the numbers for West. Mission Creek, no rate increases, continuing to spend down our, uh, reserves there in lieu of doing an increase. There's the numbers for Mission Creek. East replenishment, nine and a half percent increase. So you see that, here's the increase in the property tax support shown here. There's the numbers for the East. The State Water Project, uh, Robert gave you a very extensive presentation, uh, just on April thirteenth on this fund. We approved the one, one penny increase. That's reflected in the numbers. Here's the numbers for State Water Project Reserve. We're going to slowly build back that reserve up to the, uh, twenty million dollar level by twenty-six. And the internal service funds, uh, I am not even going to go through these pages. Internal service funds are just like, they say it's helping to support the overall, uh, operations, it's more of, uh, an accounting kind of thing. You also received the motor pole presentation last month, which was the most significant part for this group of funds. With that, I'll just entertain, are there any additional questions from the board?
Not for me.
I'm good, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Strata?
Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't have any question.
Okay.
All right, I know we've seen these things a number of times. The, the, uh, I know we got the capital budget back in April, it changed by seven hundred thousand dollars.
Five hundred, five hundred and sixty thousand.
Five sixty, yeah. Um, are you going to republish that?
Yes.
Okay. Like to see that. And, uh, this is our only item of study. So with no further business, we are adjourned.